I would like to call the February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three Call Board Meeting to Order at four thirty-one. Pete May. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
And do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? All invited. The agenda is approved. We will be voting to waive the policy for public participation in board meetings in order for our parents, staff members, community members to be able to speak and ask questions specific to start and stop times at this meeting. I, however, would like to limit each individual's comments to five minutes, please. May I have a motion to waive the board policy regarding public participation in this Call Board Meeting, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three?
Same here.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? First item is superintendent reports on the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four proposed start and stop times.
Thank you Chairman Gartrell. We called this meeting in order to hear input and public participation on our proposal for the twenty-three, twenty-four start-stop times. This discussion initiated from a request back in October of two thousand twenty-two when the principals had requested that we examine and take a look at our start and stop times. I also heard that they had asked in twenty-one as well. It wasn't here for all of twenty-one, but in twenty-two it was requested. So we went forward in December, in January of two thousand twenty-three, asked the board permission if we could take a look at this request. So we are here after talking to principals, staff members, community members, and parents to have further discussion input and answer any questions you may have. As Chairman Gartrell mentioned, because of the number of people here tonight, we need to limit to under five minutes. If you could please raise your hand to be recognized and you can just stand or sit at your seat, whatever you feel comfortable with, if you have some, a question or input. Also, according to our public participation, the board members are not to respond to anything unless they feel that they need to, and we will have a session at the end for board comments. And board members are allowed to ask a person a question if they are participating. Okay? At this time, we will turn it over to Mr. Wallace for the presentation, and Ms. Wilkins will be handing out the presentations so you can follow along.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. Board members, appreciate y'all putting this together and giving an opportunity for us to present some information to you, give you guys some facts, and Dr. Goodman kind of share with you what, what went on to kind of bring this about. So the first, first thing I want to mention before we get too deep into this is, in no way is my intent to sway anybody or, or make some kind of, you know, presentation of what I think is best or what on behalf of the district. This is simply just informational and let you guys be given what we have, have looked at with this start-stop time initiative, and then we'll talk about what we hope to gain out of this conversation, this discussion, and give you guys a chance to speak. So first of all, just thank you for being here. Welcome to, if you haven't been in here, where we have our board meetings here at the central office. As Dr. Goodman mentioned, my name is Chris Wallace, and I'm the chief operations officer here for our district. Really, just want to, again, give you guys as much information as possible and then hear the feedback. I'm interested to hear. Got a lot of different perspectives. I know a lot of folks in here, but some of you I don't know. And I'm an employee of the district, also a parent of a student in the district as well. So definitely, a lot of folks have expressed interest and have a lot of opinions and thoughts on, on how we need to proceed. So let's get started. So let's look at the current situation really quick here. This is basically how it's laid out. You can follow on the slideshow, got on TVs or a handout if you need one. Got those available. We've, we've launched Pickens Junior High and the high school together, of course, and the middle school and all the elementarys together. So that's current situation, not a lot to show there. One proposed, proposal that was brought forth was the change, obviously, of, of moving this around where elementary would begin sooner, a high school would begin later, and those times would be start, stop. We ought to change this graphic a little bit around to show you earliest drop-off time because I know that is a very big concern for folks, being able to make sure it works with their schedule. So that was the proposal or the proposed way to work this out with making the times as tight as we possibly can to make it work for transportation and all the logistics that come about with that. We do need some time there as we do rely on a lot of our drivers to drive for both settings, elementary, middle, and junior high, high. So that's why there is a, a gap in between. I would love to tell you that I'm optimistic and we can get plenty of drivers and we could start everybody same time and, and end at the same time. We probably have the buses to do that. We just, we'd need more, more manpower, and everybody has that issue around. So we're having to get creative there. It would take several more people in order to make that happen, but that maybe will be an option one day. I don't think that's today or by the start of next year. So this graphic, I know there's a lot going on here, but this graphic kind of puts everything together to show all the pertinent information by grade level or by grouping for elementary and then the secondary. One idea for, for changing this up, or if we change this up, that we were looking at was Jasper Middle School. As it stands now, of course, they release with elementary. You can see their time is somewhat in between the elementary side, the secondary side. And one reason for that would be to allow us time to pick them up, then travel to the junior high, middle, or junior high and high school locations in order to pick them up on the same route. Kind of gives you the difference in start time and stop time. This is really where it all comes together. This is probably the most important slide in this, and then showing you the academic learning time that would fall under how we would do things now. When the principals brought a proposal or asked about this, there's, there's definitely a concern, especially at the younger level, those teachers, that we ask a lot of time of them. It's a little bit, I've been at both sides of this as a, as administrator, as elementary and high school, so I understand this. But there's a difference when you are managing high school kids versus managing elementary. The supervision, obviously, is much different. So asking them to receive kids as early as possible, because some of you remember when this changed a few years back, we did have elementary going later, or earlier, and then, you know, when they changed, they tried to make it where you could still drop kids off early so that didn't make it tough for the parents, that the parents want to drop their kids off or needed to do so because the bus times didn't line up, right? So you needed to bring them on to school so you could get on to work. So I think that was consideration back then, but what it did inadvertently created a long day for the elementary folks, and we all understand and recognize that. And they've been troopers and they've stayed in there and, and done a good job, but it really does ask a lot of them for a long day, and we get that and we understand that and we want to be conscious of that. So I would love to tell you there's a magic plan that solves everybody's concern and everybody's feelings and what works for everybody's single situation. But what I do know is if we, if it stays the same, there's going to be continued, there's going to continue to be people, parents and staff who are, it doesn't work great with what they are trying to do with their work schedule or, or how they work within our district. And then if it changes, I know it's going to change some things and it's going to make it more difficult for people. So it is a serious consideration. Obviously, we don't do this very often, so this is a big deal to call this together and give everybody opportunity, and I promise I'm not going to stand up here and talk for an hour, take all your time, because we do want to hear from you guys. But I wanted to lay out a few things and kind of how we got to this point and, you know, why we needed to look at it, and I think it was a, a fair thing to do. I think this is how we get better, you know, looking at options and then exploring how it affects all the stakeholders, and you guys are obviously involved and, and care about it, take time out of your day to be here, and we really do appreciate that. So this is, hopefully lays out everything as the changes would affect, to give you the difference in the time, start and stop, shows you where, you know, we are now versus where it would change to, shows you the academic learning time and what would be affected by the changes. So I'll leave this up for a few minutes, and you want to, you want to go ahead and go through the, any of the rest of it, or you want, okay. I'll go through a few other things, but we'll come back to this slide because this is going to be one we probably need to leave up. So here were some goals that were created as, you know, what, what would need to be accomplished if we did change something, and there are several things in here that obviously are really important, I'm not going to read to you, but it's got to obviously be about the kids. You know, the decisions we make for everything we do, every dollar we spend has to be focused on what is best for the kids, their safety, health, and mobility, and their academic success. So that has to be at the forefront. Now, we can't leverage everything against that and, and make it impossible, obviously, but trying to find something that works for everybody and, and doesn't prohibit those things from happening. I do know a few things that have changed too from the last couple of years. We, you know, this was talked about when I was principal of high school, and at that time, we were averaging about seventy-four miles for us, an after-school region activity. Now we're averaging about thirty-six. So it's dropped drastically. Of course, that changes every two years or can change every two years. So that wasn't as big of a consideration, you know, for the high school now as far as travel, missing schools. So if you back their time up, it affects them maybe missing more school. Not as big of a factor now, but that was a real big factor in the past, so you know, when we talked about this before. And then, of course, looking at evidence-based research, things that, we wouldn't want to put something out there or recommend something or, now that we're even recommending this, but just, we wouldn't want to put an option out there that went against what the experts have said works best for children. So there are some things that, you know, we looked at and considered that. So there was a lot of research and a lot of looking into before we got to this point. It wasn't just, hey, here's a fresh idea, let's throw it out there. Some effects, these, this is really focused more on teenagers, and I don't go through all of this, but there's some, there's, there's some facts out there about teenagers sleeping in. Now, as a high school principal, I can tell you that sometimes I felt like if we started school at ten o'clock, we would still have kids late, and then, you know, if we started at six o'clock, we would still have kids on time and some late. So the seven forty-five is where we've been going for several years now, but the research does say the, the older kids sleeping later is more beneficial, and the younger kids getting the bulk of their academic day earlier in the day is, there, there's more success, there's more achievement tied to that. So this is just a, a little graphic that shows a few things that affects mainly high school, and the, and the research says they get more sleep time, they get, you know, more, there's, there's better concentration, they are a little more able to focus throughout the day longer, later in the day. The attention span is longer for the age of high school, so than, than elementary, of course. So you do get, you know, there are some, there are some things there that you do want to consider, but this kind of lays that out for you, and then some sources at the bottom. So where do we, where do we go next in, in all this? So basically, two choices. We current, take, stay with the current schedule and change, change nothing about what we're doing now, or we, you know, present this proposal to the board at some point in the near future for approval. If this is a proposal that people decide that's what is best for us moving forward, and then the board would decide at that point whether they wanted to adopt that, put that in place for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Considerations obviously impact on students, but also you guys, impact on families and other stakeholders, the impact on staff is, is a big consideration. Obviously, this affects a lot of people, and then transportation, which falls under my umbrella now, there's a lot of logistical issues with transportation and how this would affect that. We obviously don't want to create some system or some schedule that would make it impossible for us to be able to navigate from a transportation standpoint. So, and I know we have some transportation folks here who I'm sure, you know, have some, some better insight on some things because we've got folks that have been here through multiple times of changing of, of how we've done things. So I'm sure they'll be able to share a little bit more than that. And then, of course, the discussion, we got to think about, obviously, any pros, cons, considerations, and the impact. And so that's basically it for the presentation. I do want to go back to that slide and leave this up so people can refer to it if they want to, and at this point, Dr. Goodman, you want to open up the floor for any comments or how you, how you want to go?
Yeah. And I want to mention that if you don't feel like you want to speak publicly, that's fine. We put a QR code up on the wall, and you can submit your question there, which we will answer. We've been answering the FAQs that are on our website. We've been answering each one of those individually, and we sent out the survey three, probably three, four weeks ago to get input that way as well. Additionally, we also had a class at the high school that wrote persuasive essays as well to the board and myself to talk about the pros and cons of them going to school later or staying on the same schedule. So we have, we have the input from students as well. But if you don't want to stand up here, that's fine. You can just take your phone, take a shot of the QR code, and you can submit your question that way. Okay? From there, Chair Gartrell, would you just like to ask for any input now?
Yes, I would. Back with me. I know there's only three board members here. The other two are at the first meeting. This is the second meeting, and in order to follow Georgia's sunshine, Wallace, we have to have a call meeting for all three of us to be here at the same time. I hope you understand we want to hear from you, and we invite you to speak your mind on this topic. If you would, raise your hand. I'll call on you individually, and if you tell me your name, we can, we can proceed.
My name's Chad Green. I'm a bus driver, and the rest of the bus drivers asked me to speak on their behalf. There are a lot of cons against this with a lot of the drivers. They don't really like it. It's, it causes a lot of problems for us logistically and stuff. The, some of the main problems is we, we, we put in road to get a route. We consider the schools, the times, and where they go for our jobs, and some of these people own businesses. You only got like five percent, maybe, of the bus drivers that are doing it just to be a bus driver, you know? And that's going to mess up a lot of them going to their work. And another thing it creates is, like with the elementary, if the elementary gets off first, their, their older siblings can get them, and it causes us a lot of problems having to take them back. We've eliminated about ninety percent of that with this time change last time. I've been through both of these time changes, and this one works a lot better for bus drivers. I'm just speaking for bus drivers, not parents. But it, it just causes a lot of problems. In putting, I'm starting stuttering because I, I had COVID, it messes up my brain, but uh, they, putting the, putting the, putting the middle schoolers, junior high and high school is not a good idea. There, there are enough handful of high school, junior high. The elementary, they're still, they're still kind of immature. They can stay with that group, and it causes a lot of problems, and it will cause a lot of conflict with the drivers too still, because they don't want to have to do, they, we signed up, they signed for that route to do that certain kind of group, you know? I'm built for high school junior. I know it, because I did, I was in the, I was a sub for a long time, and I don't like dealing with the elementary. I had to, but I don't like to. They don't listen. When they don't, they don't listen because they can't. The high schools listen because they don't want to. Again, I'm just here on their behalf of the other bus drivers. I've talked to probably seventy percent of them, and they all do not want this. I'm just letting y'all know. They wanted me to speak because I'm, it's like I'm an elegant speaker again, so I don't know. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you for your input and thank you for your service.
Next.
My name's Amanda Tomasz. I have three kids. I have two at the high school and one at the elementary. I depend on my two high schoolers to get my elementary off the bus. I live paycheck to paycheck, and I can't afford anything extra. So having to pay for after-school or daycare for him would be hard for us.
I certainly understand, and thank you.
My name's Melissa Steffman, and I currently have five kids in the school system, have one at the high school, one junior high, and three at elementary. I'm in the same boat as she is. I depend on my older kids to be at home for my younger kids. I myself cannot afford after-school for multiple children. I mean, it's hard enough in these days to put food on the table, and now you're asking me to pay, taking that option away from me and forcing me to either quit my job or pay hundreds of dollars a month for after-school. Also, my other concern is, is one of my children is going to be in fifth grade next year, and the thought of him at ten years old being on a school bus with junior high and high school kids is appalling to me. I have heard stories from my older children who ride bus of things going on that I will not say because there's a kid present. It's bad, and I don't want my younger children exposed to that. So that is a major concern. That's why.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gartrell. Anyone else? Go ahead, sir.
My name's Matt Sampson. Something I think we need to look at with this is this time lines up directly with surrounding counties. I have a son in Gordon County, and I have a daughter here in Pickens. It would be near impossible for me to have my son to school in Gordon County and Pickens at the same time. I know there's a lot of, a lot of parents here like that, they co-parent with their parents in surrounding counties. That's something I think should be considered, and as a manager of a business locally here, I also think that this could impact our local economy. It's hard enough to find employees that can work, and I do think there's going to be a lot of people that's going to have to quit their jobs, stay home, and leave, that's with their kids. So I think this should be taken into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Go ahead.
As a bus driver, I drive the high school and the junior high. I am totally against the time change. I am totally against putting middle schoolers on my bus. Those kids are too young to be listening to the things that we listen to. I constantly, on a daily basis, have to tell my kids, change the subject. We need to change the subject. It's inappropriate. Now, putting that field grader on there, it's going to cause, and sixth graders, it's going to cause them to sit there and try to be, how do I word this? They're going to try to be bigger because they're on with the bigger kids, so that's going to cause them to have more issues. So they're going to cut up more. And I don't know if y'all know or not, but field and sixth grade, we already have enough of that cutting up as it is at school. We have behavior issues there. You put them on with the high schoolers, it's going, it's going to quadruple. I mean, it's just going to be a bigger problem.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
So I'm Jessica with the Boys and Girls Club in North Georgia, representing the Pickens County location at River Park today. It is very hard to find employees, adult employees, these days, and I will say the past year, the seniors at the high school have been saving grades for our program, and I can't imagine not having high schoolers get to school before the elementary kids. That would be detrimental to our program, so just my input there. High schoolers have been a saving grace when it comes to employees.
Thank you, Ms. Sampson. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Cicely Johns. So I believe this time is thirty minutes less instructional time than what we have now. So why not just shave thirty minutes off the stop time? That way, all the transportation would stay the same. The high schoolers would still get out before the little kids. Junior high, high schoolers could get to their practices, their games, you know, earlier. So I know you said that this option or, you know, what we have now are the two things that you, you know, you are considering, but consider just shaving thirty minutes off the stop time, and I think that that would, honestly, I think that would solve everything.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Brady Clark. I've been in the school system driving the bus for eleven years. I have been on both sides of this. These start times that you're trying to propose and the times we're doing now. I went from driving high school kids, now I drive elementary, so I know both times. I have kids that I take back on a daily basis because the parents can't get there because of traffic or because they can't get away from their jobs on time. These parents that I, kids that I have, the parents cannot afford to pay after-school. I know where these kids live. Most of y'all don't know our routes. Y'all have never been on our routes to see where these kids live. So how can you propose the times to change when you have no clue where these kids live or where they come from? For an example, today, I had to have other parents pick up kids that are on my pickup list because there was an emergency. The kids had no clue why mom or daddy wasn't there to pick them up. They can't get off at one-thirty to be at the bus stop at two-forty-five. How is that even feasible? How is that possible for them to make a living to support these kids when they're already struggling as it is? These times will not work. What we have in place now works. We have high schoolers, the older kids getting the kids off the bus so mom and dad can still work. We have had no issues. Before, there was kids being taken back over and over and over and over. People don't understand too. After kids get back, taken back three times, defects can get involved as child abandonment. I do not want to put any of my kids' parents in that situation. I will go somewhere else and drive for another county before I ever do that to one of my parents.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. There's somebody in the back. Sorry.
Yes, Jerry Greer. In my mind, the biggest problem that I saw was just the disruption of the parents trying to keep their schedule working. If you're changing it by fifteen, thirty minutes, most parents got it down to science of what time they got to get to work, what time they got to get to school. If you're rearranging their schedule, that's really going to cause a problem, could really cause people to lose their jobs or their employers. So to me, that was a big, obvious sticking point for the community here. The bus drivers are making really good points that I hadn't even thought about, so I appreciate their input on this. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Yes, sir.
My name's Joshua Johns. We live out in Marble Hill, and I just, just looking at this time change business, it says here approximately forty-five minutes earlier for the Teague Hill City Harmony areas. My youngest daughter already gets on the bus at six-fifty-five currently, and there's eight to ten students already on the bus at that time. That would basically be putting her, and I can't speak for others, just for mine, you know, approximately, you know, six-ten, six-oh-five, and then, then the other kids before her, you know, well before, you know, five-forty-five or so. That, to me, just seems way out of line to have children, A, up that early, but B, on a school bus that early, and certainly, you know, for your, your bus drivers, having to get up additional time to, this doesn't make any sense to me. I like the idea of starting later. I can, I didn't start school till nine o'clock, but I went to school at, I mean, two-thirty. But, you know, I, I think for the younger students, that, that's too early of a time, at least for the younger students.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Johns. Anyone? Anyone? Go ahead.
My name is Jamie King, and you have definitely brought up some wonderful, valuable opinions that I have not considered, but I would like to give you a perspective from a teacher and a parent. I have four children, two of which go to school here in Pickens County, all the way from elementary to high school, so I do see both sides. In an ideal world, students would be able to sleep until seven-thirty, eat breakfast, enter our doors at eight-thirty, ready to learn. We would have control over our schedules and could begin with academics first every day. However, the truth is, most students are arriving at our school, the elementary, around seven-thirty and have been up for over an hour before they even get there. This includes my personal child, who has to be at school at seven-thirty, because teachers are also working parents. We have zero control over our schedule and are required to teach subjects at given times during the day. Our administration works very hard to do the best that they can to make sure that our young students are beginning academics as early as possible. However, it doesn't always work out. I would like to give you an example of my second grader's schedule. Since beginning elementary school in two thousand twenty, her class has had specials such as PE, computers, or whatever, first thing in the morning. That means that my seven-year-old has not begun academics before nine-forty-five AM in three years. That pits her at three hours and forty-five minutes being awake before this, she starts learning her That puts her at three hours and forty-five minutes being awake before she starts learning her core instructions. When we look at the research, the four-hour window that has been proved needed for four-to-eight-year-olds to retain and gain information, where does that put her and her classmates? Teachers are having to teach reading and math at three p.m. to big little babies that are not physically capable of learning at that time. I think a lot of parents don't understand, we can't control our schedules and when we are teaching things. If we could all go in and start teaching reading first thing or teaching math first thing, it would make it much easier, but we can't do that. If paying for after school is a concern, could we look into some financial assistance? I would much rather my child be tired in after school than during a lesson or being taught. As professionals that are making a decision on the future of Pickens County's education, I would like to ask for you to make this decision not on convenience, not on wants or sports, but on the needs of our youth's education.
Hello. My name's Jackie Watkins and I drive a school bus. The Johns kids over here, I call their children, their high school, junior high. I have thirty-one years plus in this county. I've seen this happen several times in the past. It's not gonna work. It won't work. You're gonna be taking the elementary kids back to the school, number one. Okay, like I said, some of them can't afford the after school. I wouldn't be able to. Okay, oh, you're gonna lose a lot of bus drivers. That's my point, point blank. I'm almost ready for retirement anyway. And, you know, these time changes, I don't get home now. My bus parks at my house. I live in Marble Hill. My bus stays at my house. I don't get home now till nearly four-thirty. Okay, in the fall, if these times changes, I'll be fifteen minutes before daughter getting home. It's not fair to my kids. It's not fair to me. It's not fair to any of the other drivers. And excuse me, I'm not, I don't like talking in crowds. I don't even like coming to these places. But I've got a lot of years vested in this county. And I can tell y'all by experience, it's not going to work. And I hate to see, because right now, we're begging for drivers. They can't even, you know, you feel like you're doing something wrong if you're out sick because there's no one there to drive your bus. So, I mean, you know, just take, please, take this into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. Thank you for your many years of service. Yes?
I forgot. My name's Linda Cantrell, and I forgot to say this. Now I went to the phone. Sorry. Oh, there are several drivers who would love to be here, but they can't be here because they're still on their routes. I have asked, because I personally sent each one of the board members, Chris Wallace and the superintendent, an email asking, "Could y'all meet with us at Transportation during the daytime where y'all could talk to us drivers and get our input on some of this stuff?" But nobody wants to do that. Y'all want it all to be done at the evening when drivers, I mean, like I say, they're on the bus, they're doing what they get paid to do. So they're not getting to get their input. Y'all asked for surveys. Everybody knows when you fill out surveys, ninety percent of the time, they don't get read. I mean, let's be honest. They usually do not get read and they do not get considered. It's only when somebody actually comes and talks to you. So if y'all could please find time to come to Transportation, talk to the drivers, get our input. We drive the kids daily. We know the things that goes on. We might could help give y'all some insight that you do not have. But y'all may, then again, be able to give us insight that we're not privileged to, that would make us feel more comfortable with this. It would be a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cantrell. Anyone else? I think it sounded like an auctioneer going once. If anybody else got any comment, please feel free.
I also work for the school system, too. So that's why my input, I can't leave school until three-thirty. My son would be getting off the bus at roughly around two forty-five, two fifty. So he would be at home by himself. He's in kindergarten. Or he would be shipped back to the school. So that's why I came to talk.
I appreciate that. I had some more here. Would anybody else like to make a comment?
My name's Callie Nathan, and I'm also a teacher at Hermie Elementary. So I have the privilege of working with our special education department. And everybody has such valid points. They, you know, there are things that we haven't considered. There are things that, you know, unless you hear that perspective, you don't know. But I want to speak on the behalf of my students. I'm a single mom as well. So I one-hundred percent understand the financial, the, you know, those pieces. When I think about the kids themselves, I think about going into the classroom and the things that we are having to address and the things that we are having to deal with before our days can even get started. When we have children in before school that have been there, and this morning, I almost took a picture because every day I see it whenever I pull around a circle. But a lot of times, I don't think anything about it. But this morning, I really was thinking about our kids that are here at seven-thirty every morning and our kids that eat breakfast at school and are getting there and that have been there an hour before we ever even get the day started with academics. And the behaviors that we're having to deal with in the classroom that shouldn't have ever been a thing that we're having to deal with, but it's because they've already been around their classmates for so long. It's because they've already had the altercation or the verbal disagreement with their peer, and it ruins their whole day. And so teachers are, we're doing so much in the classroom other than academics. We are providing them with social, emotional instruction. We're providing them with that counseling ear, that advice that we can give them to help them de-escalate these situations. And it does take away from our time and our instruction that we can provide during that classroom, the block that we have them. And as someone that does get to work with some of the schedules, it is difficult to get everything scheduled the way that would be perfect. But, you know, we do have things. We want our kids to have those camp times. We want our kids to have recess. We want our kids to be able to enjoy things with their classmates. So I feel like one thing that we have to consider is during the timeframe that we have those children, what are we doing that is best for them in that building? Because I know that we all have things that we have to consider. We have childcare that we have to consider. We have, how are we going to function getting the kid off the bus, getting this taken care of, doing after school? And I do like the suggestion of maybe some financial aid. There are some things out there that I know of, I've heard of. I've seen, you know, parents and have talked to parents about getting in the past. I think that there are some solutions. And in just working with the elementary school kids, in being with the time that, I've been in the county for twelve years as a teacher, and I've been in the county for longer than that in other capacities. But having our elementary school kids go at an earlier time would be very beneficial for their education because once they get in the building, we can provide them with the things that they need, the breakfast and that love and that care, without having to de-escalate some of those situations that arise because they're there for so long. Our middle school and high school students, I know that, you know, a lot of them have jobs. I, too, had a job whenever I was in high school that I had to get to. But there are employers in the county that will work with that. And I know that since we do have so many high schoolers that are going and working in these places, I have no doubt that some of those employers would be more than happy to sit down and talk with that child about, you know, this is what time, that now it's twenty minutes later, I want to keep my job. I want to, you know, continue to work and help support my family or whatever those needs are. I think that as a bigger picture, that's kind of what we need to keep our focus on as well, is how is this going to benefit from pre-K, because we do have those pre-K babies that come as well, from pre-K all the way to twelfth grade, and not just focus on maybe what is the need of our individual family. And I know that that's easier said than done. But just as a teacher, I'm just asking you to consider the needs of all of the children. It is your responsibility as the parent to do what's best for your child. And I get that as a mom, one-hundred percent I do. But as Ms. King and I have, you know, that's our responsibility is to consider all of the needs of all of the children. So please understand that that's kind of our standpoint, too, is we don't see it in just a one-and-done. We see it as, and how is this affecting all of ours from that standpoint as a teacher and as a standpoint as a mom ourselves? So there are pros and cons, but I do remember before this was switched because it was just five years ago that it was different. And the things that we're dealing with now are way different. We're dealing with a lot more behaviors. We're dealing with a lot of things, and, you know, we could correlate it to a lot to do with the time changes. So please take that into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Sampson.
Melissa, I want to get, one other thing that I forgot to mention earlier was that as a working parent, if my kids have to go to after school for my elementary kids, them being at school from seven, seven-fifteens, the new schedule proposed, being after school until five, five-thirty is a long day for them. And then some of these kids, my kids, they go to sports in the evening time. And I know sports is not a priority, but they want, that's their time having fun and learning other lessons as well. So my kids play football. Football goes from practice three days a week from eight to eight-thirty at night, come home, you know, eat whatever. I mean, it's a long day for them. And I think you also need to take in consideration for these kids who are going to be in after school because that's a longer day for them.
Is there anyone else?
We'd like to mention one thing I didn't think about earlier. Early mornings, I do know it should be thought about. Early mornings, typically between five and seven, is the departure times for most heavy commercial vehicle traffic, first thing in the mornings. Early in the morning, you're gonna see big trucks, a lot more than you will these later times. And so this time is gonna put our kids on the buses out with these big trucks, all leaving. These drivers also, first getting started, you know, they're groggy. They haven't had their coffee. And this is something I think should be thought about as a safety concern. And I think due diligence should be taken with research and if this is a wise decision.
On the opposite end of that, and I totally do agree, my high schoolers driving right now at seven o'clock to school with the big trucks and stuff. So I would put more faith into the bus drivers versus my seventeen-year-old driver. I would rather the bus drivers have control than her with the...
Is there anyone else? Well, thank y'all for coming. We will take your comments under advisement. I've been heading down. I've been trying to make notes and track everyone's name. As I said earlier, two board members who aren't here were at the first meeting. So the whole board has heard this. Your comments have been recorded so we can share those with the other board members who aren't here. And when we take Dr. Bio and Dr. Goodwin, you have any?
No, I just, I do really appreciate everyone taking time out of your day. We've scheduled meetings at, we had early one at six p.m. and four-thirty. We try to meet everyone's schedule as much as possible. I really do appreciate hearing all the input, go back and use this information along with all the other things, meetings and surveys that we have had. As far as the surveys, we do, several of us read every single, just so you know, I'm just putting that out of there. We read every single comment on the surveys and actually on the FAQ, we answered individually every single person we put in there. If you didn't get an answer, please let me know because we had several people answering that. Even when somebody was out sick, I didn't need to say what else to do. So we took care of that. But I just, I am very all for looking at every little piece of survey. I get surveys a hundred times a day in my position, and I do understand that if nobody's gonna read it, it's useless. So I just want to put that out, that we take those into consideration. As far as the agenda, we have board comments before we have anything else. So if anyone, anyone else on the board would like to make any comments?
Actually, I have a question for bus drivers, and if any of you can answer this. I'm sure you all have the same knowledge. On average, how many kids are being brought back to school in a week?
Before, we were getting six, seven a day. Now we're getting about two a week. That cut it about ninety percent. Let's switch this. And a lot of it's solved by the older kids being there to get them.
Ms. Clark, or one of the other bus drivers, how about in your experience with bringing children back? Ms. Cantrell, any?
Before, I was taking six or seven back. And this was when I was subbing, just sub-driving for these routes. I would have to take six or seven backs a day. When we switched the times, the older kids were there to get them off the bus. As Chad said, maybe two a week. Goes from six or seven a day to two a week. But I also have another comment. I have a second job. I don't make enough driving a school bus to support myself, and I am single. Who's gonna pay me to lose hours at my other job because I'm having to leave early? Because the more of that keeps happening, they're gonna find somebody to replace me so that all of our other bus drivers that want to come, that are still on the road, how long are y'all gonna be here?
I have no place to go. I'll be glad to stay.
Let's take a, let's take about a ten-minute break and come back in ten more for six-ish.
Are y'all taking questions? Like, can we ask you guys questions?
We are not. We're just, we're just here to observe what we're all about. We'll take a ten-minute break.
Can I say one? The, if y'all ever wanna meet one of the drivers, we have a council that the drivers voted on. Chris can get you the names. That way you won't have eighty drivers. You just handle the ones from each school. And the other drivers know to come to people like me and tell us what they want to tell y'all. It keeps the chaos down. Chris knows everybody that's on that list. If y'all ever wanna meet with us.
We're going to jar them for two minutes. We're already sort of making, we're taking a few more public comments from folks who weren't here earlier. And what we've been doing, trying to limit your comments to five minutes. If you just raise your hand, I'll call on you. If you will say your name, then you've got five minutes to speak. Is there anybody who's just arrived who would like to say a few words?
That's why I hesitate to speak up because I'm not sure I can keep it to five minutes. Oh, I know somebody back there has something to say, just got here. Come on, Karen.
I'm trying, I just walked in. I'm just trying to say her real sound. I'm reading. Come on.
And I will remind the people who weren't here earlier, if you have a question you don't want to bring up here, that's fine. If you just don't want to talk, we have the QR codes on the wall. Just snap it with your camera. It goes right to the Google form and you can fill out your question there. So send it there. I know that y'all have a hard task here because you're not gonna be able to please everybody. There's always gonna be somebody that's gonna be upset with whatever decision is made. We just hope that y'all listen to everybody and take in everybody's side of the story. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If there's no other, I'll reopen the board comments one more time. I want to thank everybody for coming. We wanted to make this time to listen to everybody that we could. Is there any board members? So you can take five minutes.
I really, I, this has been very informative for me. It really has. I mean, I knew the plan, what was, and I know what research says and all of that. And I know that it helps if students, the high schoolers, come in a little bit later. But my answer to them is, go bed earlier.
Amen to that. Amen.
I mean, shouldn't they be getting, shouldn't they be used to getting up early? Because they're gonna have to get a job.
I have a fifty-year-old and a kindergartner.
I have a fifteen-year-old and a kindergartner, and I'm just gonna say, I would rather him get up earlier than my kindergartner get up earlier, I'm gonna have more of a fight with my kindergartner than my high schooler, I'm just saying.
It's gonna be the same thing over, bringing the little ones back like it was, the same exact ones every time, so there's nobody there to get them.
Well, I'll say this, the high school and junior high, they stay up all night on their cell phones.
I know. I taught middle schoolers for ten years, so I know. They stake them in, and they brag, Ms. Finley, I stayed up till 3:30 playing on my thing. And then they start getting drowsy in class, and I would just say, you can just stand up to wake up if that's what you need, because you're not gonna sleep in my class, I don't care when you went to sleep last night. And that's why I was called Neil, Ms. Finley, because you're not gonna sleep in my class. But anyway, that's just, I mean, I understand what research says, and I'm sympathetic to that, but you are exactly right, when you have a job, boss doesn't care if you don't like to get up at 5:00 to be there at 6:00. My husband got up at 3:00 in the morning, because his shift started at 4:00 in the morning, and he wasn't real happy about that, but he really liked it when paycheck time came. So anyway, but it has been very helping to me, and I appreciate so much the input that you guys gave from a teacher's perspective, from a parent's perspective, from bus drivers' perspective, and we just can't sit here and think, well, I wonder what, how this impacts bus drivers. We need to hear it from you, and we appreciate so much the work that you do. I am in awe, and I treat myself to sleeping in now that I'm retired, but the times that I drink it up early, at 6:00 in the morning, when I'm drinking coffee, and I just thank God bless the bus drivers, and especially when it's a foggy day, I mean, my, oh my, and the mountain roads that you have to go over. I am in awe and deeply appreciative of the work that you do. Especially for some of the little scallywags that you have on your bus that kind of give you a hard time. But anyway, Chairman Cantrell, if someone-
We've got one coming up, please.
I just got here, okay.
I'm the last bus in.
Yes, would you just state your name, please?
I'm Tivell, bus forty-nine.
We would love to hear from you, Ms. Tivell.
My question is, has anybody considered going back to K through fifth, at sixth through twelfth, instead of put fifth graders on with seniors possibly? I mean, that's a big age difference there. And a lot of maturity.
Maturity, yes. And a lot of, yeah.
Now, I drive elementary, so I mean, that doesn't affect me too much, but I'm afraid you might have a lot of high school drivers, say, here are my keys, because I am not driving little kids.
That has been mentioned, absolutely.
And I mean, I've been doing this for over twenty years, so, in this county, and that's what you're gonna have, and I'm also a trainer, and we can't get people in now, because I can't get them in.
I understand.
There's nothing that's being offered to bus drivers to want anybody to drive a bus. I mean, we don't get teacher retirement, we don't, our mechanics, our maintenance people, they get teacher retirement. What teacher do you know turns her back on her classroom of twenty to thirty kids for two hours at a time?
Going forty miles a day.
I got three kids to a seat.
I'm sixty-seven, Kate Jango. Now, we have increased salaries, and we offer bonuses, you know, five-year increments, you know, trying to make things as attractive as we can.
And we do appreciate that.
We do appreciate it.
My pay has- But what gets us is, when I started, starting pay was fifteen dollars an hour. Now, when we're bringing in new hires, it's twenty dollars an hour. I make a dollar and sixty-six cents more than they do, and I've been here almost eleven years.
Well, that, you would have to talk to the personnel director.
Well, that needs to be talked about, I mean, because that's not fair to much-
Right, okay, we will, as a board, we will discuss that as well.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you bringing up-
I'm taking notes, bear with me just a minute.
Yeah, he's the chairman now, so-
Yeah, when you see me head down, usually I'm scribbling or trying to make sure I'm doing things in the correct order. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before we close the meeting?
I have a question, just for the bus drivers, which is a very odd question, if you know me, it doesn't, it won't be that odd. Who was driving a bus before we went to JMS PHS? Who was here doing, well, elementary, a middle school, I guess, was that easier or harder?
You talking about K-5 versus 612, like K-5, 612, the reason? The bus is more crowded, that way.
It is. And I've done a K-33rd at Tate, and then I've done the kindergarten through fifth grade, I've done the whole route, where I did kindergarten through sixth grade and seventh through twelfth.
My personal opinion, I like it split like it is, but keeps the bus from being so crowded.
Well, some of our buses are crowded, even with-
Yeah, I know that.
Double routes, or more riders.
The chats are not crowded, y'all hear this, the chats are not crowded, and it needs more kids.
Yours is crowded, but I drive a hundred and two miles a day.
I love it too, mine's still crowded, so she-
I was gonna say, she goes- I can't go without them. Wanda, weren't you the bus driver of the year for several years, somewhere in there?
There was never a bus driver of the year, I bought the rodeo several years. But it was misquoted one time in the paper.
Well, you take that, you take that with you. Was it easier when we, was it easier when we had two, like, there were two middle schools, the high school, four elementary schools? Was it any different?
It's not much different, it's more crowded.
About the same. I mean, it's not changing the amount of kids that are on the bus, it's just changing the amount of schools there is.
Right. I'll tell you, the biggest problem right now, as I love Cory, but this middle school, the discipline, or should I say, thereof, and the way these children behave, that's the biggest problem.
And they sure don't need to be-
And they don't need to be with other schools.
They don't need to be with the big kids.
They don't need to be with elementary, because-
Need a universal, universal discipline, which Chris brought that up before.
We are- We put disciplines on our bus.
As I- Drivers for that. Jacob, you want another route?
Well, we thank y'all for extending the time and let everybody come, we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
We wanted to hear from everybody that was possible, but thank y'all again so much for taking the time to come speak with us, let us know your thoughts. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Finley?
And I'll second it.
Ms. Gibson, is there any discussion? All in favor, this meeting is adjourned.
And I have no one waiting at home, so I didn't say I-